Thank you so much for being with us. We are going to go ahead and begin our staff reviews for June 10th. We first have Dr. McKinnon joining us here at the table to talk about the use of RPPF funds.
Yes.
For Cohero. Okay, thanks for being here.
Sorry, we're not sure where this is coming from. So Cohero is our case management system where we keep all the records of our decedents. And we were looking to do an enhancement to it to add gender onto our files. Just so that we're in compliance with some standards that are going on the state. And so that we can better have a sense of our decedent's identity and give them the respect they need. And also, the other one is a task management field that we're wanting to add that because right now we're having to type notes in one area and then retype them all again in another because you can't copy and paste off in systems. So it's taken a lot of time just to make sure that our notes are consistent. And so with this, it would actually transfer the information into the other field, I guess you'd say, or the other page, the case management. We were going to ask for the $25,000 out of the general fund. And then it came up that we had some funds in the RPPF and wanted to use that funding instead for the enhancements. So it's just going to come out of the general fund.
Great. Let me just ask, Dan, anything else you'd like to add from Spock's perspective on this?
No, we support it. It looks good.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
You're in support. Thanks for being here.
If I could make a quick comment, I just want to say thank you very much. I know that the concept was controversial as it was working its way through the process, but I feel like we ended in a good spot with regard to acknowledging gender on death certificates. As a parent of a non-binary trans child, this issue is extremely important to me. I just cannot fathom that in a person's final document that their entire life would be upended and ignored. And so I just want to say thank you for working through that issue. And it seems very appropriate that we're able to celebrate it today.
I know. I was thinking the same thing this morning. So I totally agree with what you're saying. And we, in the past, it's always come up, like arguments with family, you know, who wanted what. So this is going to add a little bit more to that, what the decedent wanted, what, you know, their life, what they want, how they want to be remembered. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Cannon. Thanks for being here. Next, we've got.
Have you tried months?
Have you tried on? Next, we have development and transportation. And I'll invite Mike Sekeria, but Bella's not with us. We're going to talk about Jeffco Road and Bridge Silva Construction Concrete Rental and Replacement Contract Funding Increase. Welcome and hi, Chris.
Can Chris come up with me?
Yes, such a wonderful people. Well, planning and zoning director, good to see you, Chris. Chris is going to be presenting on the development fee reduction next. So, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so, good morning, thank you. Or is it afternoon yet?
No.
Quite. We're still doing well. We can make up time here.
So yeah, I'm here today. We want to raise this, like permission to raise this solo contract from $4 million to $4,750,000 for concrete curb gutter replacement. That's anticipate for anticipation of the 2026 overlay list because we have to get the concrete done a year before we do the paving. So the anticipated funds coming to the Road and Bridge Fund next year, we need to do a little more work to get ahead. So that's really it, $750,000.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
This one? I do. Is this a result of price increases?
Well, not really. It's more because if we're going to get more money, more no levy money next year, then we have to get the concrete fixed first before we can go and then do the other work on the roads.
Got it.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
We just want to try to get ahead.
Great. Anyone opposed? Good. All right, all in support. Thanks, Todd.
So then I've got to remember to say, can we place this on the business inherent consent agenda?
You may, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for being here. You're always good to see you.
Yep, good to see you.
Thanks.
I'm going to stand by Chris just in case he needs help.
Okay, perfect. And this is item, this item is about a development fee reduction refund program for affordable housing projects.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And I'll just mention we have Cat Douglas joining us too. Sorry, Chris, you're interrupting.
Oh, thank you. I'm Chris O'Keefe. He, him, his, planning and zoning director. Our hope today is to have a discussion about this proposed fee refund program and to receive direction to proceed in implementing the program, but also to amend the policy to include this program in an existing policy. That is, that's a new ask, so I'll go into that a little bit more during the presentation. I do want to recognize Cat Douglas here, but also Emily Sander with Human Services, Tiana Rivera with CIF, and Kristin Soski with County Attorney's Office, who's been extremely helpful in putting this together. Also, Val Montoya, who I know would love to be here for this briefing, but I think she's got symptoms. I have a slide presentation.
Would you like for me to move a moment into the?
Yeah, could you?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
We've got some subject matter expertise in case there's questions.
Further, it's a, it looks like a power point.
Okay.
There you go. Next slide. All right, thank you. So House Bill 211271 created three programs for the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to provide state assistance to local governments to promote development of affordable housing strategies, including the Innovative Housing Planning Grant Program. In September 2022, Human Services accepted one of these grants, our 15-year housing plan, which you all adopted earlier this year, was developed with funds from this grant. And as an IHOP recipient, we are committed to adopting a strategy from a list of strategies that were part of this grant program. And for the purposes of the grant, we are proposing to implement a fee refund program on planning and zoning fees for housing units that can be certified as being affordable. Next slide. This slide focuses on, you know, I guess, some of the reasons why the housing crisis has become what it is. I know I heard Commissioners talk this morning about the EDC's new report. And one of the issues that they bring up is about housing and that our housing is not keeping pace with our economic development requirements. There are other reasons that we've talked about at great length. But the thing that we're trying to address with this policy is upfront costs for development. By reducing those upfront costs, ideally those savings can be passed around, passed to the ultimate residents of those units. Next slide. Basic overview, overview, it's fairly simple what we're proposing to do here. There was a program prescription included in your package. The essentially developers or the home, or the home builder will apply for the fee reduction when they're applying for their applications. Once we're able to certify the number of units which meet the affordable housing criteria, we process a fee refund for that amount of money that the project qualifies for. We are going to work very closely with the Human Services team who have experience in certifying affordable housing projects with other projects. So we're going to use that same methodology here. And all of the application processes that the affordable projects are going to go through are the same as what regular development projects are going through. So we don't expect any change to that at this time. Next slide, please. This lovely list, which I'm sure you cannot read, this contains the list of choices for strategies that we had to adopt. There are 16. We did, we could have adopted more than one, but I think there's some pretty good reasons why we didn't. And I think the reasons why we chose to adopt strategy number two are pretty good. I'm going to go through those really quickly. Originally, we had discussed, I'm not going to go through all 16. We had originally discussed implementing some expedited permitting processes. However, because this is all coinciding with creation of the Unified Land Use Code, and we expect that some of the policies and ordinances that go along with that code are going to, will be what we expedite, we didn't think it was quite right for that. Policy one talks about the use of vacant publicly owned land. And I think Jefferson County has great opportunities for that coming up. And I know that, I know that we are working on it collectively as a county, but not quite right for this either. Some of the strategies we're already taking advantage of or are already implemented. For example, affordable housing is a use by right in all of our residential zoning districts, so no changes needed there. We do allow small houses in all of our residential districts, no changes needed there. We also allow duplexes and attached single-family homes in some of our residential districts. Improvements may be forthcoming, but we didn't think that was something to talk about. I do like to mention that number six and seven talk about subsidizing or eliminating fees for the extension of infrastructure. Because we're not in the water and sewer game, that was not necessarily seen as something that we could do. And then number five talks about density bonus, density bonus for including affordable housing. And that too is something that we will talk about with the Unified Land Use Code. Next week or the week after, I know that Heather Cuthill is going to brief you on other items that are moving forward on the housing sector too with planning and zoning through Together Jeffco. Next slide, please. See if this one's more readable. Yeah, good. So this slide really talks about who this program benefits. And I want to point right back to HB 211271, which talked about, it did identify a target median income for grant recipients. The target is for rental units, each unit must be affordable to households earning at or below 80% of AMI. For homeownership, that the level is 140% of AMI. So just to put you in the ballpark for what those numbers mean, right now, the median household income in Jefferson County is $107,800. At 140% of AMI, you could, that comes to $150,200, $920. And then based on the affordable housing definition, which is at the top of the screen, essentially that housing that costs household no more than 30% of the household's monthly income, housing costs including utilities. At, if you're making $150,000, essentially that's $430,000 for a new home, approximately. If we're proposing a tiered fee reduction, so if you're at 140%, 50% reduction certified units, at or below 110%, 75%, at or below 80%, 100%. So at 110%, that house could cost $325,000. And at 80%, it goes down to $210,000. I should point out that 80% is also the rent. At 80% monthly rent would be $2012 a month, based on that same criteria. This.
Chris wants to.
Absolutely.
So there was some discussion about this at the CCI conference because some of our county partners, in particular in Southwest Colorado, are finding that there's still a gap between what is required and in these assistant levels. And there's just like a gap. Do we see that here as well?
It's the question that even with this, we don't think houses are going to come back.
Yeah, because given the, we've traditionally, you know, focused on the middle income, you know, the 80 to 120. But what we're finding is that the affordability that is present or lack thereof is that even going to 140 is not necessarily affordable because people are having to, per the definition, expend more than 30% of their incomes on housing. That it's actually, you know, all the way up to like 170 now in some of our rural resort areas and in some other parts of the state. That's what I heard at the conference. And I wondered if Jeffco was also reflective of that.
I think so. I think the housing, the 15-year housing plan documents some of that, that we really have to, this is one specific incentive. However, we can't lose sight that there is an entire range of needs. And so, yes, I think there are parts of Jeffco that absolutely go up into that higher range. The trick is balancing as public servants, where do we recommend taxpayer dollars be utilized? And I think there's strong advocacy in the community that it feels like you hit a certain point where we shouldn't. And the 15-year housing plan, I think, does a good job of recommending where should government dollars go? And where should we let the private market take over? But I would say from the last 10 years, the private market hasn't been able to address that. The only thing that would really shift that would be a recession. That's where we start to see costs come down. No one is advocating for a recession, but that's generally the only way we will see costs start coming down without significant government investment to balance it out. And everything that Colorado gives is doing and all the various entities. And even like this morning, you were talking about Marshall Point and the groundbreaking. The county invested $5 million in private activity bonds into that project. Those are all really good examples of how we do that. This is just another option to make a dent. But you're right. I mean, I think it's fair to say this still doesn't really address the full need. It's a part of the need.
And the reason why I bring it up is I'm reminded of a statistic that came out of the Head Start, their community survey, where they determined that basically the average salary just to be able to fit under that 30% in Jefferson County was $150,000. And we're talking, you know, slightly below that. So that's what came to mind for me. And then secondly, I'd also like to point out, I recognize that we need as government to kind of stay in our lane. And that's why I'm really thankful that we're partnering with groups like the Jeffco Housing Steering Committee that was stood up by the Community Gibbs Foundation because they're focusing more on that missing middle piece. And I think we are focusing, as is demonstrated by this, by that slightly below of that missing middle. So I think traditional housing programs are, have always been like the below 30%. And so this is, this is good that we're kind of getting, you know, into that space that I don't think is getting attention elsewhere.
And I have a, I have a list of everything we've done in Jeffco for the last many years that Emily keeps track of because we're responsible for monitoring all of our assets for many, many years. And so I can share that with all of you. And it kind of gives you a good rundown as to those percentages that we have traditionally taken care of. But I agree, I think the state's done a good job of pushing government to look at a higher threshold. And I think we're able to do that a little more effectively at this point.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
All right, Chris.
Thanks. Next slide, please. I included this slide in the deck just to show you an example of some of the other cities and counties that we looked at in the area. Really, the main thing to point out here is that, is that other cities and counties are also looking at fee waivers to support affordable housing. But, but you know, as we were just talking about, the range of what type of housing people are addressing is pretty, is pretty broad. On this list, you can see that Lakewood is primarily addressing 30% AMI with their fee reduction policy, whereas Golden is 120%. So just, there's a range. Does seem like everybody is looking to do this same kind of incentive as part of a broader incentive package. Next slide, please.
Chris, a quick question for you. What does the county collect annually in developer fees?
I, so this slide here talks about the specific fees for the types of projects, which I, which I think is going to help. And I, if I were to, if Cat were not here and I were forced to answer your question, Commissioner, I probably would have, would have brought up that, well, when budget was evaluated in this briefing, they said, what is the financial impact going to be? And thinking about how many, you know, today, how many projects come through the door where single-family houses are going to be listed at under $430,000. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't happen. It's extremely rare. I set the, I said, you know, I cannot imagine that we will, this will cost the county more than $50,000 in the first year. And I think $50,000, we are incredibly effective with this and other methods of promoting affordable housing.
Yeah, the benefits for me far outweigh, but I was curious to know what the bottom line number was.
Yeah, I think we don't feel like at this point we would really lose much because we just don't get proposals for this price range.
Right.
For being developed at much higher. But we were showing that, I mean, well before review, we brought this in in 2012. We had home builders associations out at a show. We were about to hit a housing crisis because all the building in Jefferson County was $500,000 and above, and it did not meet demographic needs. And we were trying to raise the alarm bells at that point to say, we need to start thinking about this. But at that point, we'd just come out of the foreclosure crisis, and it was hard for policymakers to think about a housing crisis after we'd just come out of the foreclosure crisis where we had so many vacant units. But yeah, I mean, we'll see. If we can incentivize a market this well enough that we can get more affordable projects to come in, that would be fantastic.
So back, back to what, you know, a development of a certain size could save through permit fees, through planning and zoning permit fees alone. Cost to rezone 20 acres is $8,000. Site development plan, which is something you would have to file if you are building a multifamily structure with 20 units would be $5,500. If you got that rezoning and then you were looking to divide your property into individual lots, if it was 20 lots, that's $4,350. And then our typical zoning review fee for building permits is $250. So really, in the grand scheme of development, those are not huge, not huge numbers, but hopefully it's a start. If you were to aggregate all of those, and let's say you had to rezone, subdivide, and then get building permits for 20 units, you're looking at about $17,350 savings through, through this program. But again, that would have to be split amongst the 20 units that you're building. I should point out too that we, we had, we have talked with Building Safety about some of the other building permit fees that they collect and also looking at traffic impact fees, which are much more, much more significant on a creative basis. And we do expect that this program is going to be expanding over time. So you hopefully will hear about it again. Next slide, please. Benefits, don't know that I need to go through that, through them. But the main one is that this adoption of a strategy does support compliance with our IHOP grant. We need to do this. I do believe it is going to incentivize private sector developers who have typically built market rate products to consume affordable housing in their portfolio. Even this small amount might make a difference. It does reduce the financial burden on all developers who provide affordable housing, including our nonprofit affordable housing developers. And finally, this is going to give us an instrument to track affordable housing that's going to be developed because people will apply and we will keep track of where they are and how many units there are going to be. That's also going to help with our Prop 123 tracking. Next slide, please. The, as I said, I guess I jumped ahead to talk about the $50,000 a year, so I won't go into that now. This, the program is going to be implemented by, by planning and zoning with, with help or coordination with Human Services. There is a newly hired housing planner, if I say the name.
Affordable housing coordinator, but it's grant funded, so it's 18 months.
Her name is?
Take it.
What's her name?
Alicia.
We look forward to meeting her.
She just started last week.
On screen?
No, she's not with us today.
Okay. And then, and I mentioned this at the beginning, so using the authority that was granted in the existing, is it, is it, is it existing policy CC 20292, we're able to establish this program. But because this is funded through the IHOP, we do need to amend the existing policy to include this refund program in that policy. So, you know, at the end, I'm going to ask if we can bring this to you, bring the policy to you for briefing and then subsequently for adoption. This and then, you know, as I had mentioned previously, this will allow us to, to track affordable housing built in the county. And we expect that the majority of the projects that will include affordable units are going to take advantage of this program. Next slide, and one, and next steps. If we receive your direction to proceed, we plan, we're going to plan a launch for this program. I'm going to work with Public Affairs and try to promote this widely and, you know, and do what we can so that everybody knows about it. We are going to create a separate application for developers so that they can, so that they know this is out there and apply for it when it's going to be applicable. Fees collected for rezoning subdivision site development plan and building permits are going to be tracked so that refunds can be processed quickly and efficiently when certification of those affordable units is guaranteed. We're going to report annually on the number of units being developed, the amount of fees that are refunded, and provide an evaluation of the program and effectiveness annually. And then finally, this initiative will be combined with Together Jeffco, with Together Jeffco, the comp plan update, the Unified Land Use Code process, with all other elements of the 15-year housing plan and the housing blueprint to further promote affordable housing. Next slide. So to wrap up the request for today, I think this program is relatively simple since it relies on existing fees and existing policy. It provides a direct impact, bottom line for developers, and can be implemented as soon as it's approved. The program, with the addition of the updated policy to include the program, will fulfill the IHOP grant requirements. And it sets in motion broader housing efforts that have been outlined in some of the other housing documents, like 15-year housing plan, group's blueprint, and that are going to be talked about in the comp plan and unified. That is all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation. Very excited about this initiative, the next steps. And it's exciting to see it all start to come together, you know, the blueprint, the work that we've been doing on Together Jeffco, and so much more. Let me ask Commissioners, do you, we've got about five, five more minutes or so, give or take, for this segment. Any questions or comments? Thumbs up?
Yeah, all three in favor. Thank you.
Okay, can you?
Lots of, clap the emojis.
Yes.
Right here, can you, can you specifically state that you authorize updating the policy to include the housing program and to bring that back for a briefing and subsequently for adoption at a future meeting?
So we're, we're in favor of what Chris just said. So yes, all three in support.
We need to provide this transcript to DOLA to prove that that was the direction, so we'll comply with the grant.
Okay, did that cover it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Perfect.
Thank you. It's amazing.
All right.
I'm so excited. And I'd like to swing back to those traffic impact fees at some point, too.
You shall.
Yeah, great.
Thank you both. Next up, we've got Strategy, Innovation, and Finance. I'd like to welcome up Mike Smith for our first item, which has to do with retained revenue, wildfire mitigation, and response.
Hi, morning.
Good morning.
The good news is more fun than usual, but it's, every bit is complicated. So there's a lot of work from a lot of people that's gone into this. So we will try and catch on those who've helped as we get more into the specific items. But it's work within our team, but across the community as well. So there's really, today's briefing is sort of the next major step in a lot of those efforts related to wildfire. So there's already a lot of good work being done in this area, especially bringing back to the response to last year's wildfires and the well-loved slash program. But then there have also been important action steps that have been identified.
The good news is more fun than usual, but it's, every bit is complicated. So there's a lot of work from a lot of people that's gone into this, so we will try and catch on those who've helped as we get more into the specific items. But it's work within our team, but across the community as well. So there's, really, today's briefing is sort of the next major step in a lot of those efforts related to wildfire. So there's already a lot of good work being done in this area, especially bringing back to the response to last year's wildfires and the well-loved slash program. But then there have also been important action steps that have been identified in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan that we previously haven't been able to fund. But now retained revenue that voters have approved makes more feasible, is more feasible. So thanks to voters, we can use funding already collected through existing revenues to address some of these challenges. And if you give approval for these wildfire requests, that would lead to the first spending of the revenue retained as a result of Jefferson County voters approving ballot 1A. So that's exciting by itself, but I think the biggest excitement is really just that we know how important these efforts related to wildfire are to the community and to get those moving forward. Has a lot of people excited. So again, I mentioned how many people have helped with all these projects. I'll try and mention some of them as we get to them, but there are too many people for me to remember, and I will definitely miss some. But we want to thank everybody for all the work that's gone into putting this together as a package rather than trying to bring these forward individually. So we'll start to move through the requests, and we'll start with the items that most directly address the wildfire needs, but then we'll also get into some of the items required to support those efforts.
And Mike, I'm just going to mention publicly, we've had a couple of conversations on this, and we've done some in-depth study. We've had some great conversations with Brian Keating and the Sheriff's Team, with you and others. So I don't know if we need to go through a super in-depth, but I think, you know, high level would be great, just as a reminder. That'd be terrific.
There are a lot of items, so even high level, it's just taken me a while that I can go through and make sure we list them so that everybody knows what's included. But there are, like you said, I think, mention it later, the work session documents from May 6th have a lot more detail if anybody's interested in any one of these individual items. There's full presentations on some of them, especially the wildfire management program.
I think this might be our third round.
So that's the first one. Like you said, Brian Keating shared that program. This request includes $2.4 million of initial capital investment and then $0.5 million ongoing in 37 positions. It tackles risk mitigation and preparedness and suppression programs. And then it does that through home assessments, fire prevention education, and development of the micro grant program. But that's one, it doesn't include money for those grants just to develop it. And then the second item are the, where the state's updates to the WUI code require additional enforcement support from the Valmont Toias Development and Transportation Team. Much of that work can be addressed in 2026, but there are two items included here that have a longer timeline. So it's 165,000 one-time investment for consultant support for regulation development and then upgrades to the Amanda system to support the wildfire processes. And then Mary Berg's Human Services Team participates in the emergency response efforts led by Nate Whittington and his, I think, official last name of all of his awards this year, that we mentioned this morning. But they would, they need to have somebody dedicated in that ESF 6 role, and so this is 133,000 mostly ongoing for that position. And then Matt Robbins has told you a lot about the slash program and how much people love that, but people love it so much that there's more demand than the capacity we have. So this would add a coordinator position, but then also some of the support services, contract services that support that program, and that's 181,000. So those are the four items that have the significant impact on wildfire mitigation response, but those teams, of course, don't do it on their own. There are support services across the county that will need to increase their workload. So we've worked with the support services teams to identify what those needs are, and there's an additional 870,000 in about five and a half positions. But that is less than 20% and add to these programs. So it really is just to make sure that we don't leave them on their own as they try and build that capacity. But that includes software support and bit staffing support, HR salary support, county attorney positions related to contracting efforts, procurement positions also related to similar to the purchasing efforts, and then safety and compliance support, especially with some of the intense nature of some of these wildfire positions. It creates demand in that area. So yes, that's that really high-level listing, but if there are any questions, we've got a lot of people available to answer details, but quick question.
Yeah, and just a quick comment, and I'll go to Commissioner Zenzinger. One, I just have to say that we have been working toward this day for many years, and I really want to thank everyone that you have mentioned and so many others who've been part of this work, starting with the Jeffco Wildfire Task Force, which talked, which was tasked by the previous Board of County Commissioners to really look at ways we could do more preventative work on the front end and really build our mitigation efforts. And we are absolutely committed to those mitigation efforts and also continuing to work with our community as any concerns may come up as well along the way. But this really is tremendous. And when you compare the capacity that we had in place compared to other wildfire-prone areas, high-risk areas like Larimer, Boulder, and elsewhere, we were woefully behind. And I cannot thank Jeffco voters enough for the dollars that they have trusted to Jefferson County to make this a reality. I also know that one area that I just heard about Saturday at a fire-adapted community event were micro grants for homeowners, and that continues to be an area of real interest and concern. And of course, we often hear, too, with the slash program, is there some way we could lower the cost, or could we think about lower income numbers of our community? And I think those will continue to be conversations that we have moving forward. I just want to say that I recognize with the micro grants that, as we've heard from Brian Keating, one of our challenges is we have to get that team in place. So we have someone who can then build that structure around how we allocate the grants and do that in a timely way. But I just want to reinforce the importance of doing that as soon as we are able. And I know Brian is already, you know, thinking about potential opportunities. Unfortunately, because of the changing and shifting landscape, the only further lining in that related to emergency services is that we may be able to hire some of those great people to come and work on our team. So I just want to once again underscore the micro grants, and if we even find some room in the current budget for 2025 to address that issue, would love to see if the Commissioners and SPA is open to that and how we might think about it. I don't think there's anything for me right now that we need to change, but I just want to put that on the table as well. Commissioner Zenzinger.
So does this represent Phase 1 and 2?
It's all three parts of that.
It's all three.
Wildfire program.
Because it's my impression that 3 actually funded the grants, but 1 and 2 were just to set them up.
I think it's just expanded capacity for that team, but not included the money for the grant. Then part of it is timing, too, just to get the team and get set up. So I don't think they'd be prepared to set out the grants this year.
Okay. You are absolutely right about that. Yeah, that was the piece that Brian talked about, but I think, I know he's dedicated to getting that team in place, and I think if he has it in place, I know he'll do whatever he can to make that a priority.
I know, like, our federal grants team will try and help find, maybe that's not just federal grants, but whatever other grants to try and bring other sources of money and combine lots of support. It does seem like that's something everybody's excited about.
For sure.
And if I may add, the attorney part of it's not just the contracting, it's also helping with the enforcement, because as you know, as they change the regulations, if people are not compliant, then we need someone to enforce. And so county attorney helps with that by going to court, doing what's necessary.
And same thing for our, for Breda's team as well. I mean, this also increases capacity as we, as you've outlined, county attorney, Breda and others, it, right, it has an impact across the board in order to get it done well. Commissioner Kerr, any questions or comments?
The only comment I want to make was, and I mentioned this before, was I would like us to talk about this. And a lot of times when local governments are increasing FTE or doing a quote-unquote new program, kind of try and do it quietly and everything, this is one that, this is what the voters voted for. This is one of the big reasons we talked about 1A. I think this is a very visible and important outcome of 1A, and we should talk about, we should be loud and proud, which goes in with the whole theme of the month. Let's be loud and proud on this, so thumbs up.
I totally agree with that, and I would love to work with Cassie and her team to think about how we really lift this up and include even, we can talk about that offline instead of taking up time here, but I agree with you 100% on that, Commissioner Kerr, and also involving our partners, our fire chiefs, wildfire ambassadors, and others. And maybe there's something around timing. I know May is wildfire preparedness month, but there might be, you know, some sort of time pick that we could tie it to as well. Do we know when this will come to a hearing for final approval?
The next thing, what we would like to do is include this in the supplemental on the 24th.
June 24th?
Yeah.
Maybe there's also something we could build around that as well, since it'll be approved it. Like, it will likely be approved, let me put it that way, that day. Some more to come on that front. Great. Everyone in support?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mike. That was great. Really appreciate it. Okay, next up, we've got our executive order task force update and the anticipated impacts of the federal budget reconciliation on Medicaid, SNAP. And we'll go to Dan to introduce everyone, and we'll just do introductions around the table. Very, everyone, very welcome.
Good to see you all.
Commissioners, Dan Conley, Chief Financial Officer.
Mary Berg, Human Services Director.
Jesse Antonucci, Community Assistance Division Director.
Gina Sagan, Director of Business and Finance.
Kerry Markle, Dappy County Attorney. Welcome. Good to see you all.
So Commissioners, I'll kick it off. Normally, we come to you from the executive order task force to provide you updates. We do have an attachment to this briefing paper that shows you a table of the things that we are currently monitoring, as indicated on that, the items that are white, they're not grayed out, those are ones that have changed since the last update that you were provided. And that's going to be bulk, the bulk of that's going to be around what Marion's team's going to be discussing with you here today. I did want to mention just briefly that in addition to those items on the list, that the task force is closely monitoring a few unrelated items that aren't exactly executive orders. For instance, the House Resolution 1, which is what we're largely talking about today and its impacts on a variety of areas. One of them, even though we are be talking today a little bit about Medicaid and SNAP, we are also closely monitoring potential impacts to the Case Management Agency within the county. We may see some impacts to our CANF, to our Social Services Block Grant, to our Community Services Block Grant, and Head Start. It's not in that resolution presently, but it may have some sequestration effects down the road, so we just want to let you know that we are monitoring those. We are working with the clerk and recorder to get a better understanding of potential impacts to passport processing with one of the executive orders around the gender marking option, as well as recently, the county was listed as, by the Department of Homeland Security, it's a sanctuary county, we were taken off that list, but that's another thing that we're just kind of closely keeping an eye on. Just want to let you know some of the other items. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mary to talk about the significant aspects of the two areas that will be potentially impacted by HR 1.
Thank you, Dan, and to the team who's been working together to monitor the big bill and other executive orders. And I know Commissioners, that you did hear some of this at CCI last week, but every time I hear a presentation or attend a webinar, I learn something new about what's continued in the bill. So we're not going to go through absolutely every single little thing related to the SNAP and Medicaid proposed changes, but just some high-level things, and then those that we think are going to be most impactful to Jefferson County. So overall, just I wanted to share that our monthly average number of SNAP recipients is almost 38,000 in Jefferson County, and 35% of those are children. And then our Medicaid recipients on average are about 79,200-ish. This has decreased significantly, as you have heard, due to the end of the public health emergency. One thing I want to point out about these numbers is that they don't include all applicants who apply for the benefit programs. They're only those that are determined eligible. So the workload is much greater because the number of applicants who apply is higher than those that are eligible. And people may not be eligible based on income requirements, they also may not return their paperwork, or we might not be able to verify them for some other reasons. So I just wanted to let you know that those who are enrolled and eligible is different than that entire population that we see, and then those that are eligible and then become ineligible at redetermination time. So we kind of refer to that as churn. So overall, the proposed changes in the bill are ultimately designed, as you're aware, to decrease enrollment in both programs related to costs of those programs. But primarily, what we know is that is going to impact the overall food and health security for residents, not only in Jeffco, but across the nation. For the Medicaid program, the biggest change that is proposed in the bill is the addition of work requirements for the Medicaid expansion population, and Colorado is a Medicaid expansion state. And the healthcare policy and financing is determining that to be about 377,000 Coloradans that will be impacted by those addition of work requirements. And this is the population that is age 19 to 64 and do not meet some certain exemption requirements. And for example, exemption populations work requirements would be pregnant women, individuals with disabilities who are on SSI, those on Medicare, the aging-out foster care population up to the age of 24, individuals who are hospitalized or perhaps in a drug rehabilitation program could receive an exemption to the work requirements. What we did also here is that the work requirements would be expected to be implemented at the end of '26, and the anticipated rules that will detail more of these would expect to come out if this is passed at the end of '25. So an accelerated time period to what was initially in the bill to speed up those work requirements, which we understand that I think the state of Arkansas had attempted to implement work requirements to the tune of over $50 million, and the bill has about $100 million to implement work requirements across the nation. So work requirements, what's being identified now would include 80 hours of community engagement work that needs to be documented. So this could be actually part-time work, community service, or a half-time student. The thing that is really different about this requirement is that the 80 hours of work requirements would need to be completed the month prior to the application. So typically, we now see individuals who've experienced a job loss or some type of significant change that would prompt them to apply for Medicaid, and they need care, maybe they've had a car accident, they're in the hospital, maybe that sparked a job loss, and they need access to healthcare. So they're applying pretty immediately for Medicaid, and then we have the time periods to determine that. And now they're going to, the bill describes having those work requirements in place the month prior. So you can see right there that there are going to be people who are going to potentially now would have been eligible for Medicaid at the time of the job loss, or due to some type of accident or injury or life happens, right? And they may or may not have that documentation prior to that application. And then the work requirements, the renewal timeframe for Medicaid has also changed from an annual redetermination process to every six months. So everyone will have to go through the updated eligibility requirements to demonstrate the need for Medicaid six months instead of annually, which, as we know, will just increase our workload internally, but also increase the demands on the individuals who are recipients of Medicaid. And then currently, if someone is applying for Medicaid, their coverage can be retroactive. their coverage can be retroactive up to three months. While we're determining the eligibility process in the bill, that time period is reduced to one month. So the retroactive period decreases. And then additional requirements include address and death verifications for the program. So as I stated, this is going to increase our workload to determine eligibility just across, again, not just Jeffco, but across the nation. And then we know that these changes are going to drive higher rates of those who are uninsured. And that's going to lead to increased access to emergency care or emergency room care, which we know is the most expensive care, and also less provider reimbursements for care. So real concerns about the provider community being able to have the type of reimbursement that they have now through Medicaid to stay in business. And we think about when there are even fewer providers in our rural areas of our state. So I'm going to pause there just to see if anybody has any questions about Medicaid or anyone else on the team want to add to those kind of high-level Medicaid changes.
Mary, I just have two quick clarifying questions about some data points that you shared. Can you repeat the number of Coloradans affected by the work requirements under the bill?
Right, the expansion population in that is currently 377,000 individuals. That doesn't include some of the exemption population in there. So it should be a little bit smaller. But right now, healthcare policy and financing is saying that the expansion population is about that 377,000.
So the work requirements would affect that number of folks in Colorado, or it is expected to. But that number may go down a little bit because of the
Some of the exemptions.
Exemptions, right. I'm sorry. And then the other question that I have for you is, I wanted to just make sure I got these numbers right because I thought they were staggering. You said that the bill includes, I believe, $100 million for work requirements to offset the impacts that you have been talking about to
For states to be able to implement work requirements.
Right, right, to states specifically. But you also mentioned that Arkansas has moved forward with this work. And in its first year alone, it saw a cost of 50 million?
Yes. And I, and I don't recall off the top of my head what New York is anticipating their costs to implement. But the, so the concern is the lack of funding to implement the work requirements.
Just want to make sure those numbers right. Commissioner Zenzinger.
So obviously, I have some concerns. Back during the end of the public health emergency and through the process of disenrolling the non-eligible categories for the expansion. During that time, more than 670,000 people were disenrolled. Unfortunately, 65% of those lost coverage for procedural reasons, not because they were ineligible. So we already know that among that, you know, 675,000 people that were already disenrolled, that 65% of them actually qualified, but they were kicked off because of procedural problems. And now this bill's coming along and instituting more procedures and increasing the pace in which we have to implement those procedures. And they are new policies. So there is some bumps in the road when you implement new policies. So my question is, what are we going to do as a department, as a county, to make sure that we aren't falling into the same trap that happened? The same issues that happened during the disenrollment period after COVID?
I think that we are really going to need help from our state partners on making sure that our messaging and everything that our households and customers need to do is very, very well communicated. Unfortunately, it really feels like during the process of recertifying everything, you know, through the unwind, we did very significant efforts at that time. A lot of outreach to households through text, several notices that went out to their households and those types of things. So we just have to continue to provide client education on the changes in the program and as many outreach activities as we can possibly do to try to avoid this recurring. But I don't know that
I think that you bring up, like, this is a great challenge that we have. And again, it's not going to be just with our state, it's nationally. We know that we have challenges with ensuring that we have the proper tools through technology to be able to process things timely. And the state is working on a unified system that will connect all counties to help with some of that. We've started a work group already to address work requirements. And I think that everybody is doing what they can to try to dig in and monitor, but the timeframes are aggressive. And I believe that it's designed to put a burden on the recipient.
So I'll repeat my question. We already fell prey to the problems with these redeterminations. And Colorado did not do well. I mean, I think we were in the bottom of, you know, states nationally with these eligibility requirements and getting people, you know, enrolled. And a lot of it was due to those hangups around just procedural things, right? Which is partly communication. But that's also, for the most part, us. That's, that's us making mistakes. That's us not doing things correctly or whatever. And I know that there was a huge backlog and that we have mostly caught up. We got through that period, it was very difficult, made all of the success. So were there lessons learned from that that we can then maybe carry over as we, you know, approach this somewhat duplicative challenge and then some?
Well, I would like to take that question since Jessie's been here for a year. Turnaround has quite a bit to do with her leadership and being able to, I think where we're at now in terms of organizing our work and directing our work, we're in a much better place related to that. I think that things got really flexible and relaxed during COVID because we weren't having to process at the same rate at the same time and people's benefits were intact. So that sense of urgency wasn't there kind of until things changed. And we didn't prepare as well as we could have for that. And there were continual changes at the state. I think preparing for as much ex parte and manual renewals and things that can happen with the systems that I think healthcare policy and financing is looking at and learning from. I think the timeframe is going to be exceptionally tight for us to get our state database system in place to be able to do these changes. So anything that we can do from, I think, Representative Teteone may still be a part of the Joint Technology Committee as the chair, if that continues for next year. But just the importance that we have with needing the support at the state level to ensure that we have the tools to do our job. We have, I think, a much more streamlined call center with our wait times that have reduced probably even half. And we're working with a grant that we got to implement a chatbot, just some other features that I think we've been preparing for since then. There are so many, there are some things that I think that we can do and I feel like we've been working on that over the last year. There's some things that we still can do. And then we need the support from the state in our state supervised county administered system.
Just to heads up, we've got about 10 more minutes for this agenda.
I'll, if you're all with us moving into even more pressing news related to the snap program. So the theme continues in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program with the addition of work requirements, increasing the work requirement for able-bodied adults from the age of 54 to 64. But here's a real significant change is for parents or children over the age of seven. Right now, there are not work requirements for parents. And this will be instituted for parents, for children over the ages of seven with some limited exemptions like homelessness or aging out of foster care. They are decreasing the limit of waivers that are in place now from 8% to 1% and only permissible if you are in a state or in perhaps a locality that has an unemployment rate of about 10% or greater. And in Jefferson County, we have been under 5% since 2022. Nor do we want our unemployment rate to increase. The biggest thing that I want to draw to your attention are the financial shifts related to SNAP and the funding. Right now, the federal government funds 100% of the SNAP benefits. So we determine the eligibility. If that amount is $150 a month or $250 a month, the federal government covers that cost. In this bill, they are proposing that the cost shift go anywhere from 5% to 20% of these costs, a minimum of 5%. And the addition up to 20 or 25% will be based on state's payment error rates. And payment error rates right now in Colorado is at 9.81%, which falls into the 20% match rate. But the other thing related to payment error rates, and we don't have time to really get into what that means deeply. But the threshold for calculating that has a small error threshold in the error rate. I think that's kind of a There's a tolerance. Double error. Right, a tolerance level, and that will be wiped away to zero. So right now, Jefferson County's payment error rate is about 3.77% based on our latest calculator. So relatively low, but that will increase once you remove the tolerance to zero tolerance. So I think I want to highlight that. And then we'll tell you what we think those anticipated costs are. And then the other significant shift is right now to administer the program. So through the county admin allocation, so the staff that we have that are determining the eligibility, that is shared 50% at the federal level and 50% at the state level. And the cost shift in the bill will shift that cost to 75% or an increase of 25% at the state level to administer the program with a reduction of 25%. And so Gina, can you share what you've calculated for those potential costs?
Sure, so in our administrative costs, that would be approximately additional $2 million. We paid 20% of that current 50%. We don't anticipate that the state will have funding to cover that cost statewide. Statewide, it's almost $33.5 million.
Just for the administration portion? Not for the benefits?
Correct. So we anticipate that will probably get passed on to us. So it'll increase our match by $2 million for administration. For the benefits piece statewide, it's $359 million at 25%. So it's the highest percentage. And locally, that'd be $22.7 million.
So some real significant financial cost shifts from the federal government to the states. And then the anticipation based on where our state's at and what they went through this last year with budget cycle at the JBC. They're already stating they don't have the funds as well to that bill.
Mary, can we, we met on Thursday at Commissioner Zenzinger's request, which I greatly appreciated, to talk about how we address these issues. And we identified several strategies, in part to help our community make sense of this and to help us communicate with one voice. Is there anything, I just want to make sure we get to this. Is there anything else you need from the board at this point in time related to that conversation in terms of some of those next steps? I think we were going to circle back today to see if there's anything outstanding that we needed to discuss. Or do you feel that we've kind of buttoned up those next steps based on our conversation this week?
Right, and Cassie's here to kind of help us with, I think we're, we've executed the SNAP letter. It's getting it out to all of the identified recipients. And then I know that you're working on the Medicaid partnerships.
The Medicaid letter is ready to go if I get a thumbs up from the three of you today.
Great.
We're just waiting on that.
So we need, you're waiting on us to give you feedback on that latest Medicaid letter? Okay, I thought it looked great. If we can add some local data, that'd be great. And then Commissioners, if you have any additional thoughts to share with Cassie.
And then just to reiterate, I think we're doing that in partnership with Jefferson Center as well as our Health Department partners who are still here, thank you. And just knowing that from a community-wide perspective, there are some significant impacts. I think too, just looking at what happens with the bill and what we're going to need to do in partnership with our state, pending what the outcome is, I think it's going to be critical to have your support as you have been engaged in the legislative session. But in the off-session and in the interim, as this continues and we learn more about what happens, I think the costs are staggering. But also the impact to our local nonprofits, community partners, and the individuals in our community are going to be greater as well. As we just felt like we had some successes with the count that you were talking about before. I think this coupled with some of the Community Services block grant is just going to, you know, create more instability in our communities.
This issue came up at our Evergreen Town Hall. We actually had someone presenting on the state budget from the Colorado Fiscal Institute. And then we talked about the impact on the county as well. And we have a website, Cassie correct, that folks can go to. It's sunny in, this morning, it's still barely morning. And is that on the landing page of our website?
The federal impacts, I think it's on the landing page, but it's not moving.
Okay, all right, great. Anything else in closing? Anything else? Well, just huge, on behalf of the board, thank you so much because we know there are so many moving parts. And sometimes those EOs change, not just day to day, but it's seems like minute to minute on some days. And then they're retracted and then they come back. And so trying to make sense of all of this and how it impacts our services programs is challenging. And we're really grateful that you're a part of this team that helps us do that. So thank you so much, really appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have Jeffco Open Space. Oh, we have got one more, I'm so sorry, did I miss one? We have a grant. Healthcare Policy and Finance County Grant Funding. Thank you.
We're just going to stay right here. It's ready for us.
And is Jessie presenting that one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
This one will hopefully be a pretty quick one. We are here to seek approval to apply for, and if awarded, accept up to $40,000 in county grant funding through the Department of Healthcare Policy and Financing. For this year's county grant program, they are taking a bit of a focus on implementing the new rules that they've been making through the rulemaking process in 2025. And through that, we're seeking that these funds to help us in implementing a customer relations process for applicants, members, families, advocacy groups, and providers, focusing pretty specifically in on our long-term care team. We are hoping to use a vacant position to create a new lead eligibility specialist that's going to focus on communication cross-agency. So really taking in and looking and troubleshooting those cases that come in from our CMA, from our providers, from our other stakeholders, so that we are streamlining our processes as communication often comes in various different points. And we often have lots of people reaching out on one specific case. So we're hoping to remove the duplication and get some quicker, better answers out to our members with a little bit less confusion in a shorter time period.
And so I didn't want to be a spoiler, Commissioner Zenzinger, but this would be one of those strategies for us to be able to address, especially those who have the highest level of need. And I think both Jessie and Tim just want to commend them for their work together between really trying to streamline what's happening with eligibility in our department and the
and those who are receiving the case management services through the case management agency. And so together kind of uh, developed this and actually ran it past the healthcare policy and financing team as something that we'd like to pilot to see if we can get some success. So just seeking your um, approval to move forward with that. I will also tell you that since we did not meet for two weeks, this was due. So I talked to Joe about moving forward with applying and just then halting until your approval. Um, if you so approve, uh, before we, we haven't heard anything if we're awarded the money, but.
Great. Any questions? Um, and if not, are you in support?
Support.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you all.
Um, we're just going to do a quick time check. We're at about noon and we have Parks and Conservation up next. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, which is always a positive thing. Um, with Parks and Conservation's understanding, we think we're going to just do a quick 10-minute break to grab lunch, come bath, and let's plan on starting at about 12:10, depending on what that food line looks like downstairs, because I know some are grabbing food. Then we'll be right back.
Let's move forward with our presentation from whatever. Okay. You're still, Parks and Conservation, welcome all. If we could introduce yourselves and we'll just jump into our several items.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, we have seven items for you today. The eighth one, um, we pulled, we'll bring that back to you at a future date. Got a little bit more work to do on that one. First one is uh, the Jeffco Trails Plan Updates. And Emily Guffin is this here. She's our Trails and Access Program Manager. She'll talk about that. And then the remaining six items are all open space, real estate-related items. Deputy Director will uh, talk to, talk to you about all of those items. Um, before we start, I just wanted to offer a couple of good news items. Um, the Lookout Mountain Overnight Road closures. Uh, we, we seem to have addressed many of the uh, the kinks there. And uh, thanks to work by a lot of members of our team and several of our contractors, and especially Matt Robbins, put a lot of energy into uh, resolving some of the issues that we knew would come with uh, with a new project like this. And uh, keeping a close eye on it seems to be working well right now. Everybody not kind of worried for me. Secondly.
We'll let you know when we get more emails, but it has been really quiet at least.
Secondly, uh, for the third year, uh, several folks on our team uh, were part of the Edgewater Pride Parade. We had a float in that along with many of our colleagues around the county. Uh, and then last, uh, we hosted a pretty robust National Trails Day uh, volunteer event. And they all did a lot of great work there with 102 volunteers uh, participating in that event, so.
I will say, I swung by after our Evergreen Town Hall, but I should have gone on the front end. And because they were dispersed, they were up and working and it was great.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things that this always amazes me and oh, uh, that probably, we've probably owned Elk Meadow Park now for four decades and they removed 5,000 feet of barbed wire fence Saturday.
That's amazing.
Yeah. So with that, I'll turn it over to Emily and she'll talk to you about the Jeffco Trails Plan Updates.
Hi, everyone. Like Tom said, I'm Emily Guffin. I'm the Trails and Access Program Manager with Jeffco Open Space. And this is agenda item number 1.5.1 um, for the Jeffco Trails Plan Updates. And it is in regard to the recommendation made in Open Space Advisory Committee number uh, 25-08 to adopt the Jeffco Trails Plan Updates. So if we could move um, to the presentation. Next slide. There we go. Perfect. Uh, so first off, just a little bit of background about the Jeffco Trails Plan. It was adopted in October of 2020. And it's actually a really one-of-a-kind plan because it um, it shows all of the trails within Jefferson County. So the goal of the plan is to create an interconnected and comprehensive trail system throughout all of the county. And so um, it shows both trail recommendations within Jeffco Open Space boundaries and unincorporated Jefferson County as well as outside of those boundaries. And so um, it, it just is a unique plan in that it is a very holistic view of countywide trails. Um, the plan was developed by Jeffco Open Space, but it was developed collaboratively with the Jeffco Trails Council, um, municipalities, park and recreation districts, and our nonprofit partners in the county. And there are three main goals to the Jeffco Trails Plan, and those are to improve safety, connectivity, and equitable access. Excellent. So the three updates that I'll be talking to you uh, about today are the Jeffco Trails Plan Appendix A, Trail Definitions Standards and Recommended Maintenance Standards, um, the updated Jeffco Trails Plan Implementation Resources Document, and an interactive online map dashboard of proposed trail projects. So there are a couple of reasons, uh, I think actually go back to the other slide. Uh, there are a couple of reasons uh, why we realized that these updates were needed. Um, the first and biggest reason is that we heard from our partners who helped develop Jeffco Trails Plan that these updates were needed. Um, so specifically for the trail standards portion of the updates, we heard from our partners um, that a cohesive guide of trail standards was needed in order to ensure that trails within Jefferson County are built durably and sustainably uh, to promote a consistent and enjoyable visitor experience along trails uh, across jurisdictional boundaries. That way, when visitors go out on a trail, they know what to expect no matter what jurisdiction they're in. Um, the second reason for the trail standards portion of the updates uh, was to help uh, provider partners with the technical resource guide for how, how to develop trails, how to build trails, how to maintain trails. And then also inform from Open Spaces' perspective what types of trail projects we fund through the Jeffco Open Space Trails Partnership Program. Regarding the two other updates of the Implementation Resources Document and the Interactive Online Map Dashboard, we heard from our partners that a living version of the static PDF maps in the Implementation Resources Document was needed in order to kind of reflect uh, changing circumstances. Um, so for example, um, it gave us the capability to uh, update projects that have completed, to add notes to projects about how to accomplish those projects, and then modify those projects as um, new contexts came about that made a project uh, easier to accomplish or more difficult to accomplish. Next slide. Uh, so going into a little bit more detail about the trail standards portion of the updates, uh, the Trail Standards Document uh, contains construction details, illustrations, definitions, and maintenance standards for um, a variety of different trail categories. And those include uh, regional and local uh, hard surface trails, soft surface trails, and natural surface trails. Next slide. So this slide right here uh, just shows an example of the types of information that the Trail Standards Document includes related to the different trail categories. So this is an example of the regional hard surface trail standard. So um, as part of the document, we have a photo that depicts what a typical regional hard surface trail looks like. We have a construction detail that uh, tells you how to actually build that trail. And then we also have illustrations that uh, kind of depict some of the harder-to-visualize terms within the Trail Standards Document. So for example, this illustration um, shows how to separate a trail uh, by grade and horizontally from vehicular traffic, which could confuse some of our partners. Um, like I mentioned, we have this level of information for all of the trail categories that I mentioned previously. So for both regional and local hard surface uh, trails, soft surface trails, and natural surface trails. Next slide.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Can we go back?
Yes, please. Okay, thank you. Um, on the, the drawing on the right, um, what is it? The shoulder? Um. So is this, the, the shoulder there, uh, I know a lot of our hard surface trails around town, but um, there's like a crushed gravel path and uh, runners use that a lot. Uh, and you know, a little easier on your knees and everything. But um, here, it looks like shoulders. It's actually going down a little bit. Is, is, is there a, uh, do we have a standard there that shoulders are usually shoulder? I, I imagine for runoff and stuff like that. But for actually, for the folks who are jogging on those shoulders, probably want a flatter surface.
Yeah, that's a great.
Do we have a standard there or?
That's a great question. Um, and yes, we do have a standard for the typical slope of a shoulder. Um, so typically, shoulders are uh, graded with an outslope for drainage purposes. So that way, water that um, falls on a hard surface or soft surface trail will um, flow off of the tread surface and will create uh, erosion, um, puddles, uh, you know, all of that. And so even in the existing trails that you're referring to, that you see when, when runners are running in the shoulder of a concrete trail, those shoulders actually are out-sloped if the trail is built correctly. I will say that graphic shows it probably a little bit steeper than um, recommend for that outslope, but it does give uh, it does give an idea that we are looking for a shoulder that is um, outslowed from the trail for those water management purposes. And then I also will say that uh, within the Trail Standards Document, we also have an illustration uh, and a construction detail that shows how to construct both a hard surface trail and then an adjacent uh, soft surface trail specifically for runners. And so we do have dual-trail diagrams uh, to promote um, kind of the hard surface experience for people who are commuting on their bikes, but also a more uh, recreation uh, experience for runners or dog walkers who don't want to be running on a hard surface trail.
Thank you.
Um, and the next slide, uh, this uh, this table. Awesome. Uh, so as part of the Trail Standards Guide, we also have a summary table of all of the trail standards within the Trail Standards Document um, that specifies tread width, uh, shoulder width, surface, um, and a variety of other quick facts about the trail standards that are outlined within the Trail Standards Document. This is for quick access when you just need to review the standards really quickly. And then we also have a very similar-looking table to this within the Trail Standards Document for our maintenance standards, um, which provides all of the typical requirements for maintaining your trail once it's built. And that next slide. Uh, and then the last component of the Jeffco Trails Plan Updates that I'll be talking about is related to the update of the Implementation Resources Document to replace the, the static PDF maps within that document with a new online interactive experience builder. And so this on the screen right here is, it's just a screenshot of that experience builder, but it allows um, both the public and our partners to kind of dive into the recommendations, zoom around in the map to see what projects are within your jurisdiction. Um, click on the project and see lots of details um, about that project. Um, that could include um, updates as recently as a couple of weeks ago to kind of see the status of that project, whether it's being worked on, whether there's grant funding for that project. And then it also allows you to turn on and off different layers that are relevant to the Jeffco Trails Plan. Uh, so for example, um, you can turn on and off a layer uh, that shows the 10-minute walk shed, the 10-minute drive shed, uh, pedestrian focus areas, um, Jeffco Transportation Engineering's bike plan recommendations, and, and other layers just to see how a project shown in the Jeffco Trails Plan relate to um, other aspects of, of the, of the region. And so it really gives us uh, more capability in updating projects and making sure that the projects we're showing are accurate. Um, and so with that, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to share these updates with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Awful. Any, any questions or comments?
I think it's very cool.
I love that interactive piece too.
That's pretty cool.
The Commissioners, uh, Emily probably could be here for a couple hours talking to you about this. Did a good job being concise with it. Um, this is a really important uh, topic for us. Uh, this is, this is the, the best, most sustainable, most environmentally friendly way to connect people with nature is, is building trails in places where uh, they're going to have the least amount of impact on the natural environment, building them in a way that they're safe and comfortable for a variety of different uses. Um, so this is a really big deal to us. And when you, when you look at any park and recreation open space survey, the two top things that people want are more land preserved than more trails connectivity. And so this, this plan um, really does a great job with that. Our partners have been uh, really engaged with us. And these standards, both on the construction side and the maintenance side, are really helpful to all of our partners um, in, in understanding how to build trails, how to maintain trails, how to convince uh, their decision-makers to, to, to abide by these standards. They're not required, they're recommended, they are required when we fund a project with our Trails Partnership Program.
I have to just say, just a very brief comment. And Tom, I think I shared this with you last week. You know, we've been doing a lot of hiking because the weather's just been beautiful. And I think we've done maybe three or four different Jeffco Open Space trails. Um, I mentioned Elk Meadow before we started. And I am in constant awe of how beautifully maintained our trails are. And you know, by about 3:00, 4:00 o'clock at the end of the day, I'm ready to go and want to get out. Um, normally, it's later than that or on the weekend earlier, of course. And it's just, it makes such a difference in terms of um, how you feel and the connectiveness you feel to your community. And also the trail connectivity as well is amazing. I mean, just Elk Meadow alone, all of these different locations you could go to that we'll go back and explore on some other time. But just huge kudos to Parks and Conservation for all you do and all of the volunteers who step forward to help with stewardship of the land. It is incredible. So thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, anything else? Good.
Great, great. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Bieber Ranch Park.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hillary Merritt, Deputy Director at Open Space. And I have six items, um, real estate items to cover. The first is um, back in late 2023, we requested your permission to um, apply for a land and water conservation fund um, grant for an inclusive playground at Bieber Ranch. And um, the good news is Colorado Parks and Wildlife, who administers those funds in Colorado, um, is recommending the project for full funding to the um, National Park Service. Um, but as a condition of, of land and water conservation funds, you have to place a permanent restriction on the property, the entire property that you are having funded. Um, and so that requirement is that it be used for public outdoor um, recreation in perpetuity. And I'll have you go to the maps. Sorry, probably should have started there. Um, this is at Bieber Ranch Park, which is off of, um, just off of 285 in the Conifer area. Next slide, please. Um, the restrictions that would be required here would apply to the entirety of the park, but there are a couple of areas there shown um, on the, the points that, that would be exempted from that. So the buildings in particular sort of building envelopes to that deed restriction. And so at this point, we're just asking your um, your uh, permission to actually both accept this grant and place these um, required restrictions on the property in perpetuity. Questions about this one?
Just, just that we have LWCF dollars, land and water conservation fund dollars uh, at other locations. And this is a long time uh, restriction, yeah, or requirement uh, when those funds are used. They're federal ones.
And one other item I'll mention is, once you were designated as an LWCF site and you have those restrictions, it actually makes it easier to apply for additional LWCF funds. So we could use this as an area to apply for additional um, funding and use that as sort of an incentive for them to invest again in the same property.
I'm inspired.
Yep.
All right, that's great. Thank you. Um, moving on to the next item, uh, let's start with the map. Uh, this, this project is at South Table Mountain Park, um, which is just off of I-70 in.
Going to.
You were going to.
Saturday.
The, the project site here, we are on kind of the southeast portion of the park. Um, next slide, please. This is a zoomed-in version. So back in, um, in 1973, one of our first acquisitions as part of the Open Space was acquiring 88 acres that, um, that was part of the start of South Table Mountain Park. In 2023, we also acquired the um, Welch Ditch Trail, which is shown kind of on the, um, on the right-hand side of that map. Um, but there was no connection between those two. And um, this, this area here in the center is the Montreche Development. And this, this area here in the center is the Montreux Shea Development. And when we don't create trails, visitors like to create their own trails. And, and so these trails are very washed out. And our natural resource team and our trails team have been working on realigning some trails on our property just to the north here and, and are working on that right now, making the trails more sustainable, trying to keep people where they should be and trying to keep those out where they shouldn't be. In order for this to be successful, we need to provide that connection so that we don't have braided trails, unauthorized trails coming into the park. So we've been working with the, the development there on trail easements that are shown here in the dash lines that will actually formalize an actual trail to get up into the park. So it will, on the, on the left-hand side of the map there, that's really going to be more of a local from the development into the, into the trail system. And then the one on the right-hand side will actually provide that connection, a hiker-only connection from the Welch Ditch Trail up into South Table Mountain Park. So this is a no-cost trail easement. We will have, we will do the construction and maintenance on this property. There, it's a bit steep going up on, on both sides. We may need to put some stairs in, but, but we'll do that as part of our construction project into the future.
This is a really interesting project. And if you think about this area, there are, there, there are four different apartment complexes, the newest one being the Charles that used to be where Coleman was. There's about 4,000 people who live in that area. And so their access to the outdoors is South Table Mountain. And, and over the years, they've been accessing it from many different points because we have provided that access. And, and this is one of many efforts in that area to kind of clean up that, get those, get those trails built in a sustainable way, get them in accord with the standards that we've identified in the Trails Plan and, and the like.
And I'm sorry, but is the timeline for this?
Well, we, with your approval, we will go ahead and, and actually enter into a trail easement. And then I believe we have some funding in 2025, and then we'll look for funding in 2026. Because like I said, we're going to be doing a stair-step project that gets a little costly. So we're putting it into our, our plans with our trails team here in the, in the next probably year and a half, two years.
What's the? It's a round thing there? Kind of upper right?
Oh, that's, that's a water, that's owned by a water. I think it's a local water.
It's a, I think it's consolidated water, too.
Yeah. It's buried.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm looking on Google and the outline is. Yeah, mostly. You can see it, but it looks like it's just grass and dirt on top.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what it is.
And also. There's a statue.
That statue is actually on the Montreux Shea property, and people hike up to it, which is part of that, sort of the destination that people get to. And that's part of what this trail will, will pass by.
So interesting.
Yeah, I've never come from this, from. The, the whole land swap with the Globe Park and everything is that, does that impact any of this at all, or that's further west?
Yeah, that's just, just west. If, if you follow the trail that you can see here on the, on the left-hand side of the map, that would go into where the future trailhead as part of that land exchange. But this will provide more of that local access that Tom was talking about, the neighborhood access into South Table Mountain for, you know, encouraging people to get to, get to the park from their house.
And use real trails.
Yeah. We're parking it west.
Camp Tred West?
Yep.
Perfect.
Walking to the trail.
Yes. So you'll be right there.
Yeah.
Everyone in support?
All right, fantastic. Now, the next two are geographically related. If we could start with the map. What you can see in this map is Meyer Ranch Park. On the, we are looking on the north side of 285 in the Conifer area. And as part of the Jeffco Trails Plan, one of our goals and the goal, a longtime goal of the Conifer community is to connect Meyer Ranch Park to Flying J Ranch Park that you can see off of 73 there on the, to the west. And the next two projects will help us try to make that connection from Meyer Ranch to Aspen Park. So next slide, please. The first is an acquisition, a little over eight acres, from Norm Meyer II, whose family has, we've acquired the Meyer Ranch from. You can see it's, it's a strangely shaped acquisition that is in part to, to accommodate some of the continued needs of the landowner, but also to get us out of a lot of marshy areas that are in here. We're going to have to build a boardwalk, but it kind of allows for a better visitor experience, staying away from the road as much as we possibly can, but also staying out of the wetlands area. So it will be an acquisition there. The large chunk ties into a small strip that we previously acquired. And then it runs along kind of a berm area, on the south side of a berm area, to stay out of, of the private property there to tie into the park there, property there on the south. And we'll talk about that parcel in just a minute. The acquisition would be, what is it? $409,000. That is supported by other comparable sales in the area. Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, and just, that's, that's Our Lady of the Pines Church.
Exactly. And that's the next, the next project we'll talk about here.
All in support?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. All right. Great, thank you. All right, so moving on. And we'll go to the second map on this one. One more. There we go. So back in 2005, the county actually received a trail dedication for the areas there shown in blue. And it is, can you move zoom out just a dash so you can see the entire property? There we go. And there were, there were two different potential alignments for this trail. But what we've, what we've determined as we've continued to work with Our Lady of the Pines is that their plans for the property don't necessarily coincide with where these, these trail alignments were. They really don't work for our purposes either because the topography is a little strange in there. And so what we've done is we're working with them on that trail connection that we previously talked about with the acquisition to provide a better connection that just runs along Eagle Cliff Road. That is a very, it's just a neighborhood access point. So it's not a well-traveled road. But we would pull the trail then, kind of realigning the trail easement from the currents shown in blue to the west side of the property. And it'll just come down, parallel that road, and then connect over the road into the, the area shown there in brown. And those were trail easements that we just finished last year. So if, this will provide that connection into Aspen Park, traveling westward. So, and again, this is, this is really just basically realigning the trail. There's no cost to this one. We'll just have to go through the process to, to make that realignment.
So is there a trail that brings people to Aspen Park? Or is it just the, the road that brings them into the edge?
The, the area there that's shown in brown is all the area that the trail is being constructed in. That was a previous easement that we just acquired last year. And so, once we finish these, these two pieces, that will provide the last real estate that we need to connect on, from Meyer Ranch out to Aspen Park. So that will be a single construction project getting up through both of these parcels.
Any questions or concerns? Anyone opposed? It's up a little bit.
And then our last two projects are also geographically related. And if you would go to the first map. This is the Stafford Hogback property. And we are approximately, I'm on the west side of, of C-470, kind of at the Bowls area. So, next, next slide, please. We previously briefed you on this, on this project back in December. We needed a little bit more time to just finish final negotiations on the, on the purchase and sale agreement with the seller. And it's about 2.7 acres on the east side of a larger parcel. And the parcel to the west side of this is building a, a distillery on the property there. It's under construction right now. The, the parcel that we are looking to acquire is $200,000. It is, it is encumbered by a conservation easement that was dedicated about 20 years ago for the very purpose of, of providing recreation access to the adjacent open space properties. And so our acquisition of this property will actually fulfill the purpose of the conservation easement that was dedicated years ago. And, and we would build the, the trailhead on this site. There is a donative component of this. And, and for that donative component, we've agreed to the, the Turnbuckle Trailhead as the name that will be incorporated as part of our naming convention for this trailhead. So questions on this one?
Does this become a zone trail? Does it connect to?
Yes, it does. The trail connection, it's a little tough to see from this map. I don't know if we can zoom in a bit. It will have connections along the sidewalk that you can see sort of the east-west connection there is a dashed line. And then we actually have a trail easement that runs north-south that goes around that Denver Waterborne property. So that is one of the trail connections. And we'll look at the, the actual next project that we're looking at. Could take you to the west, show you that.
This would be the trail connection that Hillary just described would be the multi-use connection. So bikes would need to use this access because the next one we're going to talk about is pedestrian only.
Yes. Everyone in support?
Pedestrian only.
We'll describe why. Questions on this one? All right, great. And then if we could move to the second map on the other set of slides. The last project that we're looking at is directly west of the parcel that we just talked about. So you can see where Bowls connects in here. You can see that, that brown line that is the trail easement heading to the south. This parcel is about two acres comprised of actually three different parcels. And the access easement shown there in, that crosses over South Eldridge Road is actually a private road. Eldridge Road is a private road. And the access here is restricted to pedestrians and animals only. So we had originally looked at this as a, as a potential site for, for the trailhead. But because there is vehicular access that, that is prohibited here, it strictly is something that could be used for pedestrian access. So our acquisition here would provide us with an opportunity not only to tie into existing land that we already have, but also maybe provide a separation of those uses that Tom had talked about. So we could use this as a pedestrian access and use the other trail as a multi-use access so that separating the, the hikers from the, from the cyclists. And this parcel is $300,000. It has some restrictions because of the access, but it does not have the same restrictions as the conservation easement access on the other parcel.
Great. Any questions on this one?
No mention of any airplanes, helicopters, or.
I was thinking the same thing.
Or neighbors. Unnamed, unnamed helicopters or neighbors.
It's interesting, the party that you speak of is due west and over the Hogback.
I was thinking the exact same thing. Yes. Um, everyone in support?
That's when I hear Stafford Hogback. Wait, wait, what? What are we agreeing to?
I, I will mention that our planning team is right now in the process of, of beginning the planning for, for the Stafford Hogback property. So we are looking at, you know, what are the, the best trail alignments, different, different places where, what are we looking at here?
Hopefully a dog park.
So, so this one is well underway. We're excited about it.
I did notice that Beaver Ranch, we talked about Beaver. There is no mention of the dog park there at all.
There is a dog park.
There, there is two. Well, yeah, there's a dog park there. Yeah.
Everyone in support?
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okeydoke. Commissioners, do you have any reports at this point?
We're not doing.
Was that? We had a pretty robust report during our hearings, which was great. But anyone have anything for the good that they want to bring up? Okay. Deputy County Manager Kate Newman. No? County Attorney?
I spoke in my piece.
Yeah.
I, I do take it back. I do have something I wanted to bring up. We have gotten an email in the past, and now I've received two more regarding the appearance of the windows in the dome of the building. So, and I didn't understand it until recently. And now I know what they're talking about. It looks bad. It does look like they've been shot out or something.
He can explain just.
And so I, I wanted to bring it up. And I also wanted to know if there's a timeline or are we looking to get those repaired anytime soon?
There's a.
Yeah, there's so each, each panel, there's, oh, I forget. But there's something like over 100 panels up there?
Yeah.
My glass panes, I have to look at the actual facts, but. And they are delaminating, so they're not broken. They're delaminating.
Yes.
There's still in the middle. Facilities will be replacing those this year. We found a contractor that can come in. We thought it'd be, it'd be crane and it'd be closing the building. And so, but it is going to be a very expensive project. But we are looking at just repairing them this year, replacing them, even though they're not broken. It's just an appearance issue.
Yeah.
What's the timing, do you think? Should be determined?
Yeah, I think they're working on the contract. I think it's soon, soonish.
Okay.
Awesome.
Yeah, it is going to be a large expense. Struggle with it because it's not life safety. Just an appearance, so, but yeah, we will.
But it is an infrastructure. And I was thinking about 1A and, you know, it's, it's an infrastructure project.
So we'll be, we'll be seeing this soon.
Okay, great.
That's awesome. Thank you. I can't wait to write back to them and say, we're on it.
It's so nice, right? We can do that. I love that. Would you want to lead us into a motion?
One item for executive session. So if I can please have a motion to go into executive session for purposes of discussing sanctuary counties for legal advice under CRS 2464024B.
I move that we go into executive session for a thing that is absolutely not in federal or any other law. It is not defined, and we're interested to get more information on this issue that actually doesn't exist. So, thank you.
Second, the legal advice under CRS 24-6-4024B.
All right.
And I want to note.
Anyone?
I want to, I want to note for the record, there was a second item listed regarding a purchase and sale agreement, but that has been pulled from today's executive session and will be discussed in a future executive.
Anyone opposed to the motion? All right, we'll move into executive session.